All right. Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, April 1st. It's kind of 5:02. We're a little late starting. We had some technical issues. We are at the Lee Middleland High School Library. We are continuing to be in a virtual meeting room for Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law of general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. This meeting will take place in a hybrid fashion, both virtually via Zoom or in person for those committee members and attendees choosing to access in either manner. I would like to call this meeting to order pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30, Section 20. I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission statement of Lee Elementary Schools is to ensure students have the opportunities to develop the social, civil, and critical thinking skills to thrive in an ever-changing world. Brenda, can you do a roll call?
Mr. Robyn.
Here.
Ms. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Kuscherak.
Here.
Mr. Langwa.
Here.
Ms. Larmen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Strickler.
Here.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have our FY '26 public budget hearing presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Larmen. We've, this is nothing new that we've seen that I'm presenting tonight. It's been a long experience. We started this budget process informally as early as the beginning of October of '24. More formally, actually, I should say informally, back to June of last, last year, and then more, much more formally, starting in, in November. We've got, you know, I've spent the year at LES and I've, I've learned very much the importance of the three Rs. These Rs are a little bit different than they are at LES, but this budget, I think, I believe is reasonable, responsive, and respectful. It is not perfect. The perfect budget would be one that satisfied every single one of our needs in every way imaginable. However, I think that, that it does accomplish some tasks that we needed to, again, in being reasonable, responsible, responsive, and respectful. The areas of focus that drive our budget are no different than any other year. They are driven by our strategic improvement plan with, that has four core areas of curriculum wellness, technology, and district organization. That plan will expire at the end of this calendar year, 2025. This strategic improvement plan subcommittee has had one meeting, future meetings scheduled. Allow me to let this person know. So we're going to be working on that over the next eight months and certainly seeking public input into areas that they believe to be important for our consideration. Some historical context for our budget, you can see in front of you, back to FY '19 through last year, we've ranged anywhere from 2% to 4.99%. All of those numbers, unfortunately, if you would, are lower than what our number is for this year, which comes in at 5.99%, but I'll talk about that some more in just a couple of moments. There are some major factors that affect our budget. Special education costs with some placements still be, to be determined. The increased access to vocational education. We have a responsibility to make sure that students who want to access vocational education are able to do that and that we support them programmatically and fiscally. And so the added students who are attending Taconic and other VOG schools does come with, come with an expense. There are some, I put in quotation highlights because they aren't necessarily highlights, but I didn't want to say highlights and lowlights. I'm positive about this budget. It is a mostly level service with, with notable reductions. There are two staff members who, whose jobs will not be maintained. In this process, there also is loss of six periods and other things that we've done to try to accommodate the evolving needs of our students as they progress from pre-K to 12. We cut almost $220,000 since the last iteration of the budget that we presented to you and, and working with the town's finance committee. But again, we were able to do that without having too much of a negative impact on students. The current increase again over, over last year is 5.99%, and that does, again, reflect out of district special education expenses and VOG ed expenses. Our per pupil expenditure comparisons to our surrounding districts, again, something that I've shared with, with you in the past. We are pretty much middle of the pack in terms of where we rank, but we could always do better and will continue to strive to do better as time goes on, but we are, we are putting forth a, a pretty fair amount of money toward, toward our students each and every day. And then this is the big picture. So you'll see, and if it's okay, I'll, I'll just come up a little bit. You'll see where the ma, where the increases, the major increases are. You see VOG ed at 55%. This is a bit deceiving, the 13.43%. At my office, please, everyone know that's not a raise. There are some others at 11% here in special education. You'll notice, too, we increased how much money we're leveraging from school choice. I've advised the committee previously. This is our tipping point. $900,000. If we had to go beyond that and access more school choice funds on an annual basis, we're going to put ourselves in a position where we will be losing ground with our school choice monies and it will no longer be that reserve that it's intended, it's intended to be. Huge increase in the amount of circuit breaker that we intend to apply. Sped revolving, we're down a little bit there. We're able to do that. And then again, grant totals are, are down. These are things that are out of our control, but we, we did the best that we could with what we had. So that's the long and the short. You'll notice, too, at the bottom, I guess, there was, there has been historically, last few years, some questions as to why we're not putting $125,000 against spec reserve, and that's because that is, those are emergency funds. Those are for unanticipated costs, not anticipated costs that serve as an offset to our budget. So the town still does have an account for us if we ever need to access it with $250,000, should we have some extraordinary expenses related to special education services at any given year. That's, that's, that's it in a, in a nutshell. I didn't, I didn't want to overshare information because we have gone over this so many times, but I am here and happy to answer any questions, if there's any comments or concerns that are had. And so you've got public input immediately following this. I see hands going up. We'll entertain those in a few once this is paused.
Does anybody have any questions for Mike? About the budget that's on the committee?
It'll be during public input.
I just want to say I know how difficult and challenging this has all been. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I said to the, I've said to the committee before, this is the most, in my 11 years, this is the most difficult budget that I've had to work with.
We need a motion.
All right. I motion to accept rejected FY '26 budget. The total amount of $13,386,047 to be offset by up to $900,000 in school choice funds, up to 224, sorry, $222,240 in circuit breaker, up to $75,000 in sped revolving, and up to $303,9500 in grants with a grand total request. The town of Lee of $11,849,307.
Second. Any discussion?
Mike. I don't want to overstep. And so Dr. Larmen put me back in my lane if I'm on my lane, but this is something that I think you will be voting on later in the, in the agenda. That, that's the reason why this is before public input. So in the event that anyone in the audience has to share. So again, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't want to get out too far ahead. I withdraw my motion. Thanks, Andrea. You're welcome.
My last one, you make a winning decision. All right, next up, we got public input. Nicole.
Individuals are invited to address the committee regarding items on this meeting at this time. Per policy, speakers are limited to three minutes each. Issues raised will normally be referred to the administration or a subcommittee of the school committee. But with any in-person.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Nikki Cho-Cat. I am part of the CPAC group that we are trying to start now.
We actually have you on the agenda.
Oh, that's you next.
We love the excitement, though.
I do. I'm so excited.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Ashley. I have two kids that go to the elementary school, and I understand we're cutting two positions going forward, one being a first grade teacher and one being a second grade teacher. Is that accurate?
No, it'll be first grade and fourth grade.
First grade and fourth grade. Okay. And the reason we're getting rid of a fourth grade teacher?
So we had to make difficult budget decisions, and so we looked to the classes that had the lowest enrollment, and those were the places where we could cut, where we knew that the class enrollment was lower than another class.
Okay, so by that, what does that mean for each student in the class? Like, how many kids would be in the class?
So homerooms will have about 20 students, but that'll be homeroom only. We are finishing up, working on our new schedule for next year. So those classes will still have three sections of specialist attention. So it's only homerooms that are large.
With the hopes that as grades start to move up, if there's more kids, we'll gain a teacher there? Is that how that works?
Hopes, yes. Yeah.
And there will be free teachers in secondary next year?
Correct.
Amanda, I have one child in me right now, and he's going to second grade. So my concern is just there's a lot of kids that are already not meeting benchmarks, and then we're cutting positions. So we're losing, you know, valuable things. I also was here a few months back, pushing for April day pre-K, you know, to try to get the enrollment up. I know that obviously is not happening as well. My daughter will stay at St. Paul's. But in the meantime, you know, we're really trying to see, like, what are other ways that we can do to, you know, keep the teachers? And we have some really great teachers that we're going to lose, and, you know, how are we going to keep teachers coming to this district in the future? You know, so if there's ever, you know, more money coming later, who's going to want to say, like, hey, like, I'll go to Lake, like, you know? So those are just my concerns. I want to make sure that the kids have the backing.
Every effort will be made. If it's okay, if I come in, every effort will be made to, to you make sure students get at least the amount of services that they've received in, in the past when we move forward. And I think we will be able to achieve that with the newly designed schedule that will go in full effect.
Thank you both. Anyone else?
Oh, Miss Sherry, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Claudia K. Ellen. I have a son in Lee, which is close to. My main concern is having 20 students even in homeroom. It's a lot, especially if you don't have three teachers or how many teachers you have in that. Because even me being in college at the moment, we don't have 20 students. We have maybe 10 to 14 kids in the class. So if that's even adults trying to learn, I don't know how children will learn.
Your sentiments are heard, for sure, and eliminating positions is the last thing we want to do. Unfortunately, to get to the 5.99%, the only way to get there was with salary reduction.
Hi, my name is Sheri, and I'm just curious now, with losing a position, how many children will be in each classroom in first, second, third? What do you anticipate?
So again, the homeroom numbers are larger. Those are short-term placements, right? So it's, it's homeroom might have 20 kids in them, but the, when they get spread out into their, their math, their ELA, their social studies, their science, those numbers should be reduced by about a third. So we should be looking at about 13 or 14 students in those classrooms.
Well, in a grade, like, second grade, where they're together?
This is what I'm saying, right.
So how much time, I'm sorry, is, is a homeroom for second grader versus breaking out into?
Wait one moment.
You have a ballpark, never mind.
It's a small, I mean, it's, it's, right. I just literally.
I believe it's 25 minutes.
So it's, you're talking, you're talking about 10 to 15 minutes. That's okay. I was trying to give you, based on the new schedule, exactly what that number looks like.
So there's the new schedule. I'm also, I'm a grandparent. My children have gone through the school system. I have two grandchildren in Lee Elementary, and I'm a former educator. My concern is, number one, class size, and especially for the younger grades. And number two, once you lose a teacher, ever getting it back is almost impossible. When I see in the school district that I worked in, which was Central Purser. And if that were to happen, if class sizes get too large, then you have students, I mean, you're, we're concerned about out of school, having school choice, and all the funds that that costs, and all the special education funds that we, we have to pay from our district, and I pay taxes, and we. It's, it seems to me that those will get larger if you have larger classrooms. So I'd like to see smaller classrooms so you have less out of school expenditures. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Anyone on Zoom?
Mr. Hall, are you good?
Okay, we will have a short recess, and then we will reconvene to go through the rest of our agenda. So I'm saying like two minutes. But enough for everybody?
Yeah, you need to pick a vote on it.
Oh, we got to vote. You got to vote on it.
Motion to adjourn, I'm sorry, motion to recess. For, for two minutes.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us into recess?
Mr. Robyn?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Ms. Kuscherak?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yeah.
Any roll calls back in, Brenda?
Sure. Mr. Robyn?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Kuscherak?
Here.
Mr. Langwa?
Here.
Ms. Larmen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Ms. Strickler?
Here.
All right, welcome back, everybody. Next up is approval of the March 11th, 2025 Lee School Committee Meeting Minutes.
I made the motion to approve the March 11th, 2025 Lee School Committee Meeting Minutes.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? You will call us, Brenda?
Mr. Robyn?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Kuscherak?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have a presentation. Now, now.
I'm Nikki Cho-Cat again. So I'm a parent of a child with special needs, so we wanted to get our CPAC group started back up again. Because it's been.
Since before COVID.
Yeah, before COVID, since we've had it. So we just started, we've had two meetings, and we just want to get parents involved, see what they want from us to help them. We did plan a meet and greet, a safety meet and greet. I don't know if you guys want, want this?
We got it.
This is our first activity that we're planning, and it's May 1st. So our next meeting is April 29, and prior to the meeting, we're going to send out a survey to see what parents would want. If they want speakers, they want activities. I mean, I have a son that's older, so he's in high school, whereas somebody else could have, I know, could have, you know, somebody in third grade. So our needs would be different, so we would want different things. So we just want to get, like, an opinion of what parents want and what we can do to help them. And that's pretty much it.
Anybody have any questions for Nikki?
They're going to be forwarding the information, and I'll do a blast out.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
That was going to be my question. It was going to be what, when, when and where on the first, but you're.
Yes, yes, I have this, and we're going to print them out, and Jen's going to send them out. And I have a couple of friends that own businesses around town that are going to put these up for them. And we do, this time, first year, we didn't have a sensory hour, so like, no sirens could go or anything, and a siren was blown accidentally, and some kids had a real problem with that, and this is why we need this.
Yeah.
So we do have sensory-friendly hour, the first hour this year. Because we've learned.
Do you want to just say where it is? It's going to be here from five to seven.
It's going to be here from five to seven. The first hour is sensory quiet hour, which, I mean, anybody can come, but we want those parents of kids that do have sensory issues to feel comfortable to bring their children. And the police, the fire and ambulance people are all so amazing in helping us coordinate this. Anything else? Anything?
I think it's great.
Thank you.
I think it's fabulous, and I appreciate you taking this on.
Oh, okay, well, you're welcome.
I'm not the president, by the way.
I thought you were.
No, I'm just the secretary. Presidents have other things going on right now, so I'm here. But I will always help.
Thank you to all of the.
Yeah, I will always help if you ever have any questions, because
I think that's.
That's what we do as parents. We stick together, help each other.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, next up is our superintendent's update.
All right. Thank you, Andrea. Quick, school enrollment as of the first, that's yesterday, or today. I'm sorry, that's today. Whoa. Joke. Anyway, we're at 632 students. We've hovered right around that number all year long. You could see the number of outplaced tuitioned and school choice students, and we'll be talking about school choice a little bit later on in the meeting. MCAS testing began last week at LMHS, begins next week at LES, and it's going to be Monday to Thursday next week. The test dates are set, and I appreciate all the work that staff have been doing in both schools to get students prepared, excited, and ready for their, for their assessments. School choice, here is my recommendation, and again, we can talk about this later, is that we basically remove the cap in most grades with the limited exception in grade one to open five slots, grade four to open two slots, and grade eight to open three slots. Feel like everywhere else, we can continue to absorb students without sacrificing quality of education. Vaping concerns amongst, probably something I should have talked about a long time ago, but became really important in the last week. We are finding younger and younger students vaping, bringing those devices to school, being recorded using those devices, vape devices outside of school hours. It's, has required a lot of work by a lot of people, staff and administration, adjustment counselors, whatnot, conversations with students. And I'm just leaving the screen up while I talk to you so that people at home will be able to see it and anyone in the audience. But it's, it's a tremendous danger that these, the experimentation that's happening among students, and I can tell you from, so far from experience, as, as young as fourth grade, probably younger, that just hasn't made its way to the, to my office yet. But it's very, very concerning. And so this is a message to our community that we need to work together to stem the tide of vaping, because it is going to have significant negative impacts on, on the health and the wellness of our students as they, as they get older and they mature. So just a sort of a word of caution. We did consider the idea of putting in vape sensors in elementary schools. I just don't know that the cost and the benefit, if you would, is going to be realized as conversations with Principal Brigetti down here. Students are finding creative ways to circumvent those sensors. So that the investment in the, in the sensors at the elementary school, I don't know if this time is worth it, so much as more educational opportunities for families and students so they understand the dangers. Budget, not going to rehash what we just talked about a few minutes ago, but that's just a quick review of where we were. The last day of school is still June 16th, and we hope to keep it there. If we don't have a repeat of last year, then we should be good. And then, quick thank you. It's Andrea and Betsy's final meeting with us in the Lee School Committee. And I know I speak for, for everybody when, when we say thank you for everything that you've done, for the questions you've asked, for the guidance you've offered, and the best interest of students and staff always at the forefront of any decisions that all of you make. So thank you. And, and from the, from the committee, a couple of little gifts for you. I think this is Betsy's, the heavy one is not picking your head. There you go. But, but much more important is that second comment down there. If anyone knows someone who's interested.
Yeah.
My last check with Town Hall was nobody turned papers in. So there will be two vacant seats. I'm looking out into the audience to see people who might be interested. There are two vacant seats. Nomination papers are due to the clerk's office by the 7th of April. So you've got a little, six days.
Yes.
You can do it.
You can do it.
You can do it. Whoever you might think, you can do it.
I like to say, Natalie, when can you do it? We need.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Next up, LES.
Four to three grades closed last week. Report cards will go out on Friday. Kindergarten open house was held on the 19th. Registration is scheduled for the 30th. Pre-K pay screening will take place on two days, April 29th and May 1st. I'm sorry, Jennifer, I stole that from your report. School council meeting on the 8th. There's a PTO meeting tomorrow night. The walk to school event that was originally scheduled for next Thursday got moved out one more week so as to avoid any conflict with MCAS. We didn't want, we didn't want anybody to show too exhausted, although some good, healthy walking is, is, will assist you in your, your production of, of positive energies around, around test taking. The robotics team, congratulations to them. They finished second out of 27 teams in a program a couple of weeks ago. Great work by that team. They won the best programming award, and they took third place for the project award. So that's pretty outstanding. And this morning, we were joined by a group from the Susan B. Anthony Birthplace Museum in Adams. They did a nice presentation that was funded through an application that that museum did with Berkshire Taconic, and so we were able to award them some money. So they came down free of charge, did a really nice presentation for some of our students who were remarkably engaged with, with the Susan B. Anthony impersonator, which was really, really cool. So that was fun. It was exciting, and I think the kids really enjoyed it.
Anybody have any questions for Mike? I'm assuming you're done?
I am.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions for Mike? All right, Greg's not here.
Greg's not here, but I have.
He's home, getting himself well.
Yeah, he is. And I do.
He's going to do his presentation.
I do wish him the best. It's very extraordinary for, for Greg to miss a meeting, especially at this important. So he says, keeping it short, and I will do that. Spring sports games started this week with the weather cooperating so far. Senior English classes went on a field trip to New York City last Thursday to see the great Gatsby. Everything I heard about the trip, from the, the bus driver being amazing to the show being tremendous, so very, very positive experience, I think, for the seniors. Grade 10 MCAS ELA is now over. ELA for grade seven and eight will start the week before break. Math, science, and civics will follow after break. ELA for grade seven and eight, uh, will start the week before break, math, science and civics will follow after break. The scheduling process for next year started today with students currently in grades seven through eleven getting information and sign up sheets. The middle school spaghetti supper, I hope Greg is well for this, uh, is Thursday from five to seven. It's an annual fundraiser, fundraiser that helps pay, uh, for middle school field trips. This weekend, uh, the high school band will be heading to Philadelphia for a clinic and a concert, that's a, a trip that this committee approved about a year ago. Uh, next Wednesday, we are, the LMHS will be hosting the United States Air Force Rock Band to give a concert for our students. And then the annual career fair for LMHS will be on Thursday, April seventeenth. And I'd love to answer questions, but I'm not sure.
Special light.
Um, so Mike did mention, uh, some of the things that had on here as far as the kindergarten, uh, sorry, preschool registration. On April twenty ninth and May first, um, the other pieces is that any students that are going to be invited to special education, summer programming. Based on their needs through their IEP, those letters will be coming out in the next two weeks. So parents can keep an eye out for those and it'll have specifics about who the staff is gonna be and how you can indicate if you need transportation. And all of that, so those letters are being prepared now, um. Nikki Choquette did also say that we, um, they are going to be sending out a survey, so I'll be sending out a blast. To everyone in the district with information about our meet and greet with the emergency responders. As well as a link to the survey for the special education parent advisory council, um, if you have anything that you'd like to add, they are, it's wonderful to have an active. An active advisory council again, um. I think, oh, and also we are, we have posted for summer positions for those special education students that will require, um, some programming. And we definitely have some paraprofessional and transportation related, uh, positions open, so if anybody's interested, you can reach out to Brenda. In the superintendent's office or myself and, uh, we will respond.
Questions for Jen? Alright, Jen, your turn.
There was a lot of excitement facilities last month, which is usually a good thing. Uh, we filed a statement of interest for both groups, uh, with the MSBA, a weekly point deadline. And World Energy was in and they did some preliminary planning for the energy efficient upgrades we're doing this summer.
That's it?
That's it.
I, I could add, if, if we could, we, we also are exploring the possibility of installation of. Uh, EV, uh, charging stations, uh, that would be at zero cost to us. Uh, the, the issue is finding the right place to pull the power, uh, and. Not, uh, damaging any work that, that may be scheduled to be done, uh, with asphalt or concrete work. But we are in the process of at least exploring it.
Any questions for? Alright, moving on to our committee reports, first up, finance committees.
We met earlier prior to this meeting and we discussed warrants, Mr. Jensen. We've had two accounts payable warrants since our last meeting, the first one totaled one hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and ninety-five cents. And the top vendors for that warrant are due for Eversource and Trafara. And the second warrant totaled two hundred sixteen thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty cents, and the top vendors for that warrant are due for. Gateway Regional School District and monitor equipment, the total of the two warrants is three hundred seventy-four thousand fifty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. And we did vote to approve this one.
Okay, I will entertain a motion for the warrants.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants, total amount of three hundred seventy-four thousand fifty-nine dollars and fifteen cents.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us, please? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Keshar?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
And the payroll warrant totals since our last meeting are, is seven hundred thirty-one thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. We did vote to approve this one.
I will entertain a motion for the payroll.
I motion that we accept a payroll payment of seven hundred thirty-one thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars eighty-nine cents. Sixty-nine cents, sorry, man.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
You sure?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Stay.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have old business contracts for the Lee School Committee approval.
So, um, this was, uh, tabled to this meeting from the last, um, let's put the opportunity for, uh, for the committee to further. Examiner having an opportunity fully examine all the contracts, um, I did provide, uh, the committee with a, a summary of the changes. Uh, in the contracts, uh, the. Negotiations, subcommittee voted to approve, uh, these contracts, these, uh, what are five contracts as proposed. Um, and I support that, uh, it was, it was, you know, it's always a, a difficult process, but, uh, there was a lot of cooperation on both sides of the. Of the aisle, if you would, between of the school committee, uh, and the various bargaining units, so, um. I, I don't know if you have questions, but again, I think that the, for the most part, that, that summary sheet should speak pretty well for itself.
We need to vote on each one, right?
Uh, you probably should do each one individually.
One, honey? Yes, please, thank you darling. Here into the rescue, okay, so the first one we have is unit A contract.
I'll make a motion to approve unit A, I'll second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Sure?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Stay.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Alright, next up, we have unit C. Anybody like to make a motion for unit C contract?
I motion we accept unit C contract.
Second.
Any discussion? Brenda? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Sure?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Stay.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Alright, next up, we have our cafeteria workers contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the cafeteria workers contract.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Question.
Bless you. Bless you. Thank you. Brenda, can you roll call us, please? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
You sure?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Stay.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Next up, we have our custodial employees contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the custodial employees contract.
And I'll second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Bren. Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Sure?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Stay.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Next up, we have grounds and maintenance contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the grounds and maintenance contract, I'll second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us? Mr. Rob?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Keshar?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Stay.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
And last up, we have our secretary.
I motion to accept the secretary's contract.
I will second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Keshar?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Stay.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, everybody. Especially our opener. Next up, we have new business, first up is the, uh, approval of our FY twenty-six budget.
I motion to approve the projected fiscal year twenty-six budget in the total amount of thirteen million three hundred eighty-six thousand forty-seven dollars. Being offset by up to nine hundred thousand dollars of school choice. Two hundred twenty-two thousand two hundred forty dollars of circuit breaker. Up to seventy-five thousand dollars of spend revolving. Up to three hundred three-nine thousand five hundred dollars of grants. For a school request of the Town of Lee, eleven million dollars, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and seven dollars.
Second. Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us, please? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Keshar?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Alright, next up, we have school choice.
So, um, but again, my recommendation, uh, to the committee, uh, would be that we, uh, remove the cap on all grades. With the exception of three grades, that's grade one for five slots, grade four for two slots, and grade eight for three slots.
I will accept a motion regarding school choice, removing of the cap. Except for grade one, four and eight.
I move to accept this school choice motion, reverse the grade.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just curious, the numbers because of the incoming classes and teacher size and all of that, is that?
That's why it was a smaller, that's correct.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
In the finance committee, told us, the town finance committee told us, you know, uh, that we need to put students in seats, uh, I guess I get. I mean, we, we received pretty substantial pressure from the town finance committee for a budget, um, and I. I mean, this is an opportunity to increase those classes, increase enrollment in the schools. And I recognize that right now we're budgeted minus two positions. But is this an opportunity, let's say that miraculously, there's fifteen kids in one of these targeted grades that were. Producing staff. And we can bring them in, town finance committee has told us to increase enrollment. I mean, I think actually their direct quote decided to increase enrollment or reduce the budget. So, we are in their request by trying to bring in more students, I get the fact that if we bring in like. We hit like a tipping point of like bringing in six kids in one of those classes and now we have home rooms of twenty-two, twenty-three apiece. Sign up to stand up a third grade, third section necessary, I get that.
So, uh, from this, and I appreciate that question, I think that, so from the state perspective, all they need me to do is be able to tell them. Whether we are participating in school choice and in my grade levels, they don't need to know numbers. So if we happen to get seven applications for grade one, for instance, and you've capped it at five. I could come back to the committee and, and ask you to reconsider, uh, whether you want to change that number, uh, to accommodate the extras. Or whether you want to participate in a lottery for those five slots, so.
We have done that before.
Yeah, yeah. And why don't I, my personal opinion is that we stick with that way that we've been doing it, because I don't feel comfortable right now saying let everybody in when. We just voted to approve a budget that cut through teachers and for me, that was like. The hardest vote that I've done in four years on this. The, the absolute hardest, you should know that in my heart, I didn't want to do it because my son is actually in the grade that we go down to two teachers. Um, but my mind tells me, um, that there's no other way, so I would just like to leave the school of choice, the one for eight for right now. And if, take it as we come, in my opinion, we don't want to overwhelm these teachers right now when we just did this.
Right, we don't, so we will announce, whatever the committee decides, we will announce that there are open slots at all grades. Uh, we don't necessarily have to say that there are only five seats available in grade one.
Right.
And we'll see what we get for applications, it's, it's very, very rare to get. A large number in any one, in any one grade, but, uh, I think the removing of the cap for the most part, at least says we're open. Doors are open, come on in.
Appreciate that you put the thought into it and that you would bring it back to the school committee, if you do get the awesome. You know, problem that that might cause, but I also, you know, hearing the, the parents and grandparents and the community. Just talk about, you know, the needs of the students, which we know and how, you know, we have. A lot of angst about this budget this year and negotiations and everything else.
Yeah, I mean, but, but, to me, it's like, this is one of our decisions, right, to me in terms of budgets, like last year, yeah, not, this year, we have no option. Yeah, it's something that came this way, like, I don't feel good about cutting positions, because I was one of those teachers. Year before last year got cut due to budget restraints, a year before that, so I understand that, my heart goes out that way. But also, this is the way we have, and sometimes, reality is that gotta go with what we have. And if it means if we need to put some kids in the seats to get where we need to be for our staffing. And go in that direction too, so. Like I said, it wasn't easy for me, it's been three nights, sweet, trying to figure it out.
It's been five months.
Might just, um, this is not, asking, that's probably not a fair apples to apples comparison or, or really a question, but. If we were to think of school choice per grade, right, like how many school choice students would we need to bring in to pay for one of those teacher roles?
They get five thousand dollars. Uh, per student.
I, I don't.
So you're looking at, uh, twelve or thirteen.
Thirteen kids.
To get back to. To, to cover one staff member.
Thank you. And I know it's not, like, you don't think that way.
Correct.
But in terms of this conversation, just. That's what I think about a little bit of, like, what it takes to get back to that.
We still are, uh, annually, since I've been here, we are net positive in terms of the numbers of students who are coming in versus those who are going out. Uh, I'd like to continue to increase that, uh, differential, so that we, we have many more students coming in than we do lose them to.
I think that's a huge testament to the teaching and the faculty and the, the things that happen. Walls and sports teams.
That also would increase, uh, to, I know we did this before advertising, are we gonna go back to that or?
Yeah, we'll continue, uh, you know, the, uh. But that, that budget, uh, number is, is low as far as what we've got available to us for advertising, but we will, uh, explore social media a little bit more.
I remember that billboard when I was coming home, so.
Right, right. Yeah, that was nice.
Any other discussion? Uh, thank you all for your thoughtful comments and concerns, uh, Brenda, can we do a roll call, please? I don't think emotions, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Um, Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Keshar?
Yes.
Ms. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler? Yes.
Okay, next up is the May Lee School Committee meeting. So as I warned you all, last year, when you insisted on me continuing to be the chair. You all have to meet immediately after the election to vote a new chair. Because that chair has to sign diplomas for Greg and should be attending the, um, graduation ceremony on the seventh of June. The elections are on the twelfth, on Monday night, the twelfth, and your school committee meeting, your next school committee meeting is that Tuesday. Right now, as we talked about earlier, nobody is running. So it's just the five of you, it will still be, unless anybody is running right to the town hall right now to take out the. Alright.
It's worth it.
Um, so. If nobody is A written in or B runs, you're gonna have to do the same thing that we did for you. And for Craig and for Nicole and for Kirk and for me, you're gonna have to advertise for the position and have somebody come in. So the decision you need to make is, do you want to hold the meeting on the Tuesday after elections? Hope that somebody gets written in and accepts the nomination, which I will not be doing, so don't bother. Um, and then goes down to get sworn in before our meeting, which. Um, and then goes down to get sworn in before our meeting, which not ours, yours, I will not be here before the meeting, which starts at five o'clock. So your question is, do you want to do that or do you want to push the meeting off for the following week, which is the twentieth? That will give time if somebody does get voted in, written in and they accept the nomination to get themselves sworn in. In the past, it hasn't been an issue because our meetings have always, were always at seven o'clock. So they had, people had time to get home from work, run down to get sworn in and then show up to the meeting at seven o'clock. Because we moved our meetings forward, which I think has been great for everybody. Um, I think that's gonna make it really difficult for people to get from work to be sworn in to a meeting. So your two options are continue to have the meeting on the twelfth and make sure you all show up because if you don't all show up, there will not be a forum.
Right.
Or hold off and have it on the twentieth with the hope that somebody gets written in and has time to get sworn in, or one of these lovely people back here goes out and takes out nomination papers and is voted in.
Or has your family write?
Or has your family write them in?
Yeah. Thanks, Mom.
So I have no stake in the game. My last commitment will be to show up to the town meeting on the eighth, which is at seven o'clock, and I expect to see every one of you there. Everybody that is a a, all the people that are staff on our school, on our school staff should be there if you are a resident of Lee because it is a voter. We all vote. It's not like it used to be. And so the more people that we have there to vote for this budget, the higher the likelihood is that it will pass. And so I am asking people, if you took the time to come tonight and and the last three or four meetings, please take the time to show up to that meeting as well and and say your piece. Um, and I'm done. So you guys decide.
So uh what I didn't have in my calendar uh that might make this decision a lot easier for all of you is it's uh Tierney and Town Meeting is actually on the thirteenth, the Tuesday.
Mm-hmm. Um. So Mike won't be here.
I won't be here and 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 I cannot send uh a representative to that meeting this year.
Yeah.
Uh, so I need, I will need to be at Tierney and Ham, so I would be unavailable for the school committee meeting if you did it on.
Is anyone opposed to pushing the meeting later on in the week? Sorry, any of the priors still be here?
Yeah.
No offense.
You have a strategic planning meeting scheduled on the fourteenth. Nothing right now, as far as I can tell, on the fifteenth.
Is the fifteenth a problem for anyone?
I have it in mind. I knew I was gonna be that person.
Fight after is probably hard.
I would highly.
That's not. I'm sure the new members of the committee would love that.
Uh, next week following the week of the nineteenth. Anyone have anything anywhere?
Hold on, I see.
You don't have to do it on Tuesday, Jen.
I could do it Monday or Tuesday. I will be in Marlboro Wednesday and Thursday of that week.
Monday and Tuesday, what do you have?
Tuesday.
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 I think this Tuesday work for you?
Yeah, that works for me. The only thing I have in my calendar, but I think it's at seven, is a special town meeting. Is that such a thing on the twentieth?
Yes.
Maybe I wrote it in wrong. I don't know.
Oh, I think that's true.
No?
I think that's the one for the LA. Yeah, yeah.
There is.
Oh, okay. It's fine for with me.
It was like our next, our next, and it's not me and Betsy, will not be here. Your next meeting is gonna be May twentieth at five o'clock. Alright. Last item on our agenda is adjournment. Yes, oh, sorry, I forgot. See, it's because I didn't write it down. Um, Betsy has more new business.
I do, and I.
She did check with me, just so you know, I just.
I did, I did. Uh, so approximately five days ago, the members of the school committee were sent a message, an email from the education, Massachusetts Education Advocacy Board. It is a new initiative coming from not the state, but from people within the state complex. Um, and they are basically working to find what are the needs of school districts, especially some of those rural and impacted by some of the funding. Um, they would like information, including impact statements, um, finding ways that we need and use our funds and perhaps find opportunities for future additional funding. So while I will not be a member of this school committee, I would highly like to highly recommend that one or two, as they say, active community members within the district be willing to help spread the word in the community, whether it's town media, social meetings, social media town meetings, et cetera. Um, and start to network and find information out and share information. So knowing that we did have to make some di- difficult budget cuts and knowing that the um government administration has basically made some additional funding cuts to schools and rural school aid, I would highly recommend that this be something that this committee looks at.
I think they're looking for a letter of support from from the committee as well. You guys? Alright. Back to the last item on the agenda. I will accept a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you do my last roll call out? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Sher?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler? We are adjourned at six.